I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Okay. Joel Reese and Basim Verdas asked to be excused for this evening. Charlotte Bethia here. Richard Prokanic.
Here.
Alan Rich.
Here.
Gary Rosenthal.
Here.
Robert Shepard. Faraz Khan. Michael Dougherty.
Here.
Basileiki Anastasikos.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here. Minutes, the regular meeting, January 5th, 2023. We need a motion.
I'll move.
Second. Charlotte Bethia.
Yes.
Richard Prokanic.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yet.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Michael Dougherty.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Resolution, Gennaro Costabile, ZBA 2200020.
I'll move.
Second.
Charlotte Bethia.
Yes.
Richard Prokanic.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Don Genho, ZBA 2200022.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Charlotte Bethia.
Yes.
Richard Prokanic.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes.
Just for the minutes for January 5th, I just looked. Basileiki Anastasikos?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. There isn't anything up for discussion this evening. You have or you have access to a copy of updated minutes, not minutes, bylaws that we discussed at the last meeting. The idea is for you to look over everything, make sure it's what we talked about, and we'll take an action at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There is one typo, and I don't know if you want me to bring it up now or when we discuss the bylaws. It's a minor. I think on page 19, sorry, 16, the fourth paragraph from the bottom, item 210-2A, in the second sentence where it says, "in which he has a disqualifying interest," rather than a "disqualify" interest.
Okay, we can make that direction for the next, make sure it's set for the next meeting.
Let the record show that Robert Shepard arrived is here.
And then moving into the hearings section, American Outdoor Advertising, ZBA 2200019, preliminary final major site plan with the D variance in which the applicant seeks to construct a static billboard at 347 Elizabeth Avenue Somerset, Block 500.01, Lot 1, in the B1 zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members, Board professionals, and members of the public. My name is Michael Silbert, and I'm an attorney at the law firm DeFrancesco Bateman located in Warren Township, New Jersey. I have the responsibility this evening of representing the applicant, American Outdoor Advertising. And as the chairman stated, this application is for preliminary and final site plan approval together with D3 variance relief for property located at Block 500.01, Lot 1, more commonly known as 347 Elizabeth Avenue. Subject property is located along the south side of Interstate 287. The property contains 3.52 acres, and it's currently developed with an office building. The applicant proposes that the existing office building remain and that a two-sided V-shaped static billboard be constructed to the left rear of the existing office building with the billboard pole to be located within the parking lot. Property is owned by Promagranit Investments LLC, and they have consented to this application. The applicant will be a ground tenant on the portion of the property where the billboard is supposed to be located. The property is located in the BI, Business and Industrial Zone, where the proposed billboard is permitted conditional use. As stated in the TRC's memorandum last revised, January 23rd, 2023, the proposed billboard will have signed faces at dimensions of 14 feet by 48 feet, which is the smallest standard size in the billboard industry. The proposed billboard has a height of 50 feet above the elevation of I-287 and 61.5 feet above the elevation of the parking lot. So the parking lot elevation is 11 and 1/2 feet below the corresponding elevation of I-287. As previously indicated, this proposal requires D3 variance relief pursuant to the township's ordinance. The minimum distance from any portion of a billboard to any portion of a non-billboard structure shall be 100 feet, and where the applicant is proposing to locate the billboard, 13.3 feet from the existing office building on the property. We intend to provide further testimony as to the selected location for the billboard, but it's our contention that the proposed billboard is compliant with the other conditional use requirements as articulated in Section 112-53 of the ordinance. The presentation of the application will be made through three professionals this evening. Mr. Brett Scapinetz, a professional engineer from Dynamic Engineering. Also in attendance this evening is Mr. Connor Hughes, professional traffic operations engineer, and he can address any traffic concerns associated with the proposed billboard. And lastly is Mr. Matt Flynn, professional planner, who will address the proposed variance relief associated with this application.
Quick question.
Sure.
This, I want to make sure I locate the building that I'm thinking of. This building uses a religious institution, correct? And it's not a mixed use, it's totally religious, right?
My understanding was that it was, that this building was for office purposes.
Well, a long time ago it was, but it was before this board for zoning variance.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's somewhat, I think, I mean, structurally it looks like an office building. When you drive by it, it's the, when you're driving northbound on Elizabeth, it's the last building on the right before you go under the underpass.
Yes.
I think it's, yes, it was a subject of an application for, I think for a portion of it to be used for religious purposes. I think it might be some office and some of the religious uses that were approved.
Okay.
But that's the site in question.
Just making sure.
Mr. Chair, I did drive by the site this afternoon. There is a sign. I have a picture that I could share that points to the back of the building, and it says Guru Jhika Ashram. So it looks like it is currently in use by a religious group.
Just verifying.
Yeah.
Right spot. Thank you.
I can, I can just say that the owner of the property obviously was involved with the process and has consented to this application and very much aware of the applicant's intention to locate a billboard on the property. And I have the, I have the principal of the applicant here this evening, who might be able to answer any questions about this if it is necessary later on this evening. But, Mr. Chairman, I would ask if I can introduce our first witness, Mr. Scapinetz, and have Mr. Scapinetz sworn, and allow Mr. Scapinetz a few moments to place his educational background and professional background on the record.
Please raise your hand. Do you swear the testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record is, well, good.
My name is Brett Scapinetz. Last name is S.K.A.P.I.N.E.T.Z., and I'm a director with Dynamic Engineering Consultants out of Chester, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, have been so for well over 20 years.
I'll accept the credit.
Say, been before this board in the past a few times, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Scapinetz, did you prepare, supervise the preparation of the site plan before the board this evening?
Yes, correct. And that will be the site plan set, which I will run through. It's been presented, delivered to the board, and that is the site plan set for American Outdoor Advertising with a preparation date of July 1st, 2022, last revised January 18th, 2023.
And you've prepared a number of site plans for other billboards in the past, right?
Yeah, I've been working and done plans for dozens of billboards throughout the state of New Jersey over the last five to 10 years, both static and digital, this one being a static billboard proposal.
So I'm not going to steal your thunder, so can you please share with the board what American Outdoor Advertising is proposing to do by this application?
Sure. What I'd like to do is, Mr. Silbert gave some of the basics of the property, and I have the site plan set up, and it's on the screens for you all to see. So I'll skip some of the basics as far as the block lot dimensions, which he already gave. So this property is on Elizabeth Avenue and just south, to the southeast, we'll call it, of Route 287, the overpass over Elizabeth Avenue as Elizabeth heads into Southbound Brook. The property you see is outlined on the cover sheet. It's a wedge-shaped property with the majority of the front along Elizabeth Avenue and then goes to a point as it runs to the east. I believe this building, if I'm not mistaken too, back in the day, I think it was a housing, might have been a toy company was in this building years ago, for a number of years.
Yeah.
For a while, so. The property is in your BI zone, and as noted, hold on a second. The, so this is an aerial photo, so in the BI zone where the billboard is a conditional use under Section 112-53.1, what I have up on the screen.
Sorry to interrupt. Is that aerial part of your site plan?
It is part of the site plan.
Okay, good.
Yep, this is sheet two.
Got it.
I'm going to run through the first three sheets of the site plan set.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So this is sheet number two, and I'll zoom into it to highlight the property in which we have shown the proposed billboard location on the property itself with a couple key dimensions. Going, running clockwise around the property, so starting on the left-hand side, and I'll move my cursor where the hand is at Elizabeth Avenue. This is the driveway to the proposed building. That's at the intersection of Elizabeth and Campus Drive. It forms essentially a four-way intersection with that driveway. There's one dimension from the billboard to the nearest residential dwelling that's off to the west at 584.5 feet. This also shows the nearest distance to residential, the closest residential, at being 305.4 feet, and that's to the north across Route 287 at Mercury Street. Then the next dimension, running clockwise, is 1,014.7 feet. This is the dimension from structure to structure. So the endmost point of, on the easternmost point of our proposed billboard structure on this property to the westernmost point of the existing billboard structure that lies to the east along 287. That is the closest billboard to here, and as under the conditional use requirements, we're required to be, have a separation of 1,000 feet, which this shows we meet it. And we dimension this by actually surveying that structure. So this is an actual true dimension of 1,014.7 feet. Yep.
Are your cursor moving on that device?
I was moving it, yes.
And so where is the billboard going to be?
So our billboard is record to be where my hand is now.
Okay.
And I'm going to zoom to the next page to give you more detail on that.
Okay. Because I was having trouble following that. All right.
So, yeah, I'll go right to that. I think that, so this just gives you the setting and general parameters of what surrounds us.
Yeah.
And so each of these dimensions that I went through, all of them are shown that were compliant within the code, with the exception of one, and I'm going to get to in a moment, in relation to the distance of the billboard to the existing building on site. So this next sheet is sheet, site plan number, sheet number three, which is our site plan sheet within the set. And this shows typical site plan form, the zooming in, the location of the building that's on site, and focuses in on the proposed billboard and where that's going to be located on the property. So if I zoom in a little bit more, Elizabeth Avenue is on the left-hand side, running up and down on the page. Campus Drive is where my hand is on the screen now, off to the left. Here's the driveway entering into the building. When you enter into the building, the distance from that billboard to the edge of Elizabeth Avenue is 210.5 feet. That is one other key dimension that we needed to meet. We needed to be over 200 feet from the roadway, and we're at 210.5. When you start to turn around the backside of the building, that is where we're proposing the billboard. So it will, as soon as you make a right-hand turn around the back, we are getting rid of the first parking space in the row that faces the back of the building. Getting rid of that one parking space allows us to put the sign in a location where we show it, which is also away from and not going to impact any vehicular movements of traffic moving in and or out of the building, employees, or any visitors to that building.
I have a question.
Yes.
So when I was there this afternoon, as you go into the, is it true that there is only one driveway leading to the parking area, which is exclusively in the back with the exception of three parking spaces, as you show them?
Yeah, there's.
Immediately to the left as you go in?
Correct. There is, there is one driveway coming into the site, one access point. There are nine parking spaces on your left as soon as you pull in. And then once you get to, once you've hit the backside of the building, that's where the majority of the parking field is. It's all in the back of the property and goes basically all the way to the back point of the property.
But the way the billboard structure is, I know you're going to have more drawings, but to what extent is it, or is it not going to inhibit or make somewhat risky the driving and reducing the visibility of cars coming?
I don't have the exact number on the weight, but this is a very typical design. They're either in the middle, or they're on the edge like this in the flag, either center mount or as a flag. Those are the standard way that it's set. These, you know, you can find and see these up and down, you know, pretty much any highway, you'll end up seeing a flag configuration.
Have you had any fall down?
None. And they're designed in such a way, again, this is, they're, it's pretty much down to a science when it comes to the steel, the structure, what goes on, what you see above the ground. The only variable is going to be what's below the ground. So we need to understand how big the foundation's going to be.
How deep is it below the ground?
How deep is a good question. That has to be, that still has to be tested. There's some soils testing that we need to do post-approval to determine that, but typically the hole at the bottom is roughly six feet wide. So we're only going about six feet wide by however deep we need to go. So essentially, we're looking at this being, it's a caisson footing, so it's essentially just a cylindrical footing, footing that goes as deep as we need to do to get stability. What I will say though, in doing numerous projects in Franklin Township, is that soils around here are pretty consistent, and they're pretty good structurally once you get down below the first three or four feet of clay. And once you get down before the three or four feet of clay, we're getting into ripable rock, and we're going to end up, once the design, and with the weight, with wind loads, everything is calculated, once we get those soils results, the final determination as to the depth of that footing will be made.
Okay.
Do you think, maybe this isn't, you know, necessary, but is there any reason to have some kind of a marking on it? Lately, I've seen some crazy people driving, maybe at night, the bottom part of, something that reflects off, or no, you know that it's there since it's an end parking place? I don't know. You have the experience. I don't know if that's necessary or not, but.
I mean, I don't, there's not, you know, the speed's through here, no one's speeding through here. You know, I just went through there myself, and it's like any other parking lot where you're, where you're, you know, maybe doing 20 miles an hour entering into this location. You're coming, you've already come around the curve to which you're already, and getting to the parking to which you're already sort of sensitive to, you know, people, foot traffic and so forth. I don't think a reflective marking is necessary, but what we did already, we did put bollards around it. We'd show bollards around the outside to protect the outside of it, but beyond that, I don't think anything more is needed.
Okay.
I have another question. So you said that the structure, the base of the structure is going to take one parking space on the one side?
Yes.
What about the other side, the left side of the, of this base? Is it going to be on the grass, or?
No, we're going to, the base, the base itself will be drilled in place within the parking space area itself. A parking space is nine foot by 18 feet, so we have enough width within the space to deal with a six-foot essentially drilled hole that we expect to probably to be done in this location. To the left of that parking space is more parking spaces. To the right of it is a landscape area. It's already, that exists right now, is a grass area. When you, when you enter in the driveway, everything along that right side of the building is, is an area of grass about 20, 25 feet in width.
That's the buffer of the tree, buffer zone between the parking and Route 287?
No, if you, I'm going to go back to sheet number two, so I can zoom in, and I'll show you the aerial photo.
Great.
So the sign is right where my hand is, and I'm moving it now?
Right.
If you entered in the driveway, I'm talking about this grass here, so when you enter in, there's about, this is about a 25 to 30-foot actually strip of grass that continues all the way to the point of the sign. So where the base is, to the, bless you, to the right of it, if you're facing the building, is grass, and to the left of that base is one, is, you know, the rest of the parking.
I'm talking about the opposite side of that.
Okay, so, okay, so the opposite side of the sign.
Right.
Yes, this is, that is, that's the existing vegetation that runs along Route 287. That is not on our property. It's on Route 287. It's within the right-of-way.
And are you planning to disturb any of that, any of the trees, or the?
In our plan, there's no plan to disturb the trees.
The growth.
And any disturbance would be, would require a permit from the DOT separately to deal with any maintenance of that.
Are you familiar with religious festivals?
In general or in this location?
Yeah, I just meant to say, are you aware of the fact that during festivities, the religious groups have quite a bit of traffic?
Okay.
They generate quite a bit of traffic. I lived in Bridgewater, and I remember when they were proposing, one of the temples there, the primary concern was the traffic, that it would generate particularly during specific Is this sort of like going to inhibit that or make it difficult for, you know, let's say, 100 cars coming in and out within a one-hour time span?
No, this has zero, as I mentioned earlier to your other question, this has zero impact when it comes to the flow of traffic on site. No different when that sign is up than the way it's flowing today. The only, the only, the only impact is there's a loss of one parking space in that location, but also in our plan, and I'll zoom in on that area. Towards the back, there's an area where we can stripe in two more parking spaces. So we're, in fact, we're, we're providing a benefit to the use, it's actually underparked by code. We're going to help that situation by gaining one more parking spaces back than what we're disturbing or removing for the sign.
Yeah, I'm sorry to be taking all this time. I'm primarily concerned about driver safety here, families with children in the cars and things like that. What are the proposals for nighttime visibility of the base of the billboard?
As I mentioned, I don't, there's no proposal to light it up or illuminate it. There's no need to. It's away off the drive aisle. It's in a, it's in a parking space to where a vehicle could be parked, so it's, I'm looking at it no differently than a parking space. The only thing we need to be careful of is obviously, we don't want somebody running into it. Different than a car, a car, sure, gets damaged, that's a bad thing, but it's even worse thing if it, someone, a car hits it and the pole comes down. That's a really bad thing. And therefore, that's why we are proposing the bollards around the sign. That will be the first impact point should anyone, for some reason, be flooring it going through a parking lot, coming off the roadway, you know, heading into a parking area of a business. There is that protection that's being proposed.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, the last, the last question I have for you is, the main thing that doesn't really seem to work here is the location of the sign close to this building. You're supposed to be 100 feet?
That's correct.
So why isn't it further toward the point?
Because if I move it closer to the point, now I'm under 1,000 feet, so I'm closer to the sign that exists to the east, the next sign, and in, which you, you understand there's one, the next one east, right?
Yeah.
So we would be within 1,000 feet there. So what we looked at it, it was, well, we thought that was sort of, it was one of the lead conditions, so we thought of that as maybe the most important. So we would meet the 1,000, and honestly, while you have that condition for the 100 feet, I'm not sure the genesis of it, but I've also worked on billboards that have been located on top of buildings, that are, that are right next to buildings, right up against buildings. So there's not an issue here with respect to, the foundation design for this sign is going to be designed such that it won't have an influence, a negative influence on that building. So short of a concern of the, of the sign falling down, which is probably the only reason why you would probably have that 100-foot separation, I have zero concern over it because we have, we're designing this foundation to be independent of that building, support that sign fully, and actually, beyond the weight of that sign because of the design requirements that are, again, I mentioned before, wind loads and other forces that are at work. It's designed beyond just the weight limitation.
Okay, now, the last thing I have relates that same issue, because it says at the bottom of this, this staff comments in the bottom of nine, it says, "Although the previously proposed location in existing striped island further from the building would be preferred."
Right.
So in your previous iteration, did that break the 1,000-foot rule?
Well, it did, and now, and I'll, let me explain that. When we did the initial design, we didn't have a survey of the other sign. What we did is we did an estimate off of Google Earth and some other GIS data, and it was very close, and we were concerned that it quite frankly could trigger a secondary variance. And we went out, when we surveyed it, we realized that it did. So if I look, if you look at the, if you look at the, I'm zooming into where the sign is now, we originally proposed a sign where my hand is here in this parking space. And what that resulted in is for the sign being at approximately, I think it was 980 feet, call it 970 to give me a little breathing room, 970 feet away from that other sign. So we moved it basically 40 feet to the west.
Okay, so, so if you, if you put it in that little island, you would need two variances instead of one?
That is correct.
See, I'm paying attention here. All right. Great. Good to know.
Okay. And to be honest, we don't, to us, it doesn't matter where it goes. The same testimony I'm providing, nothing changes. If the board comes to the conclusion that Mr. Healy is right and prefers to have that other location, we're okay with that. We can still meet the requirements for the, for the distance across the highway, for separation from Elizabeth Avenue. We then get more separation from the, from the building, not 100 feet, we're still going to be under 100, but we're more, we're going to be roughly three times that amount that we are now, three times the 13. We would just be about 30 feet under the requirement of the 1,000 to that other billboard.
Mr. Healy's always right.
Thank you for that. I'm not sure my wife would agree, but thank you for your vote of confidence. So just, are you, so is the applicant okay with either location?
Yes.
Okay. So what I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you have more direct testimony?
I do.
The board has already asked all the questions you were going to run out.
Honestly, I have just a little bit more. I'm just going to talk about lighting, and then I was going to hit your letter. So however you want to go.
I would suggest we have him finish his direct testimony and then move forward.
Finish, get it all.
Sure. Okay. So I have given a full description of the location of the sign. This sign doesn't generate parking, it doesn't generate other things that we talk about in a typical site plan. But one other feature with the billboard is obviously illumination of the sign. So these are two static billboards. They're not digital, they're not changing. I know there is the one digital sign two down from us to the east along 287. This is very similar to the, to the, to the closest billboard to us, is two static faces. As mentioned earlier, they're 14 by 48. These are illuminated by four, each side is illuminated, each side is illuminated by four LED fixtures. They're manufactured by a company called Holophane, H-O-L-O-P-H-A-N-E, which they have been making fixtures. They're manufactured by a company called Holophane, H-O-L-O-P-H-A-N-E, uh, which they have been making fixtures for billboards for a long time. The technology these days for this billboard is well ahead of what it used to be. They were non-LED, they didn't, the way that they were, they were boxes, they were wide-open face, and they had basically no shielding. So, essentially, you had, uh, a beam of light coming from a bulb that shined very bright, and you saw hot spots on a board. It provide, its sky glow was, was crazy because they were tilted on a, roughly a forty-five degree angle up towards the board. And so, you had a lot of sky wash, and, uh, they are, were inefficient. These are way ahead of their time. So, there are four LED bulbs. They're, the lensing that goes around it allows the light to be now focused on the board, but focused in a way that you don't get bright spots. So, it's essentially a, a broader, uh, light wash across just the board itself, it's a consistent light across the board. But they're also shielded. So, you, the light, uh, illumination or the source within the bulb, or within the housing, is set back in behind the glass, and there's housing, uh, the housing covers the top of it, which helps to reduce significantly sky glow. Again, they're LED, um, honestly, they have the ability to then be, uh, honored and, and turned down a bit if necessary, but as, as they come standard, uh, they are significantly better than what's out there. So, we don't have, we have minimal, minimal impact, uh, on, uh, anything beyond what, you know, is, uh, being illuminated on the board itself. So, there would be a total of eight fixtures, four per side.
And there's a detail of that on your plans?
Uh, yeah, there's a detail on that, on the, on the plans in the back, uh, sheet, that would be on sheet four. In fact, uh, you know what, I'll go to it, I have it in the set, I forgot.
So, um, the, the, uh, report, uh, the TRC report says, uh, that the ordinance says, illuminating lights shall be arranged so as to direct illumination only toward the billboard display area and to reduce overglow and glare.
Yes.
And then it says applicant should demonstrate compliance through testimony, hearing exhibits, and through necessary revisions to the submittal. So, do you feel that your testimony is, is enough to deal with that, or do we have more?
I'm gonna add more of this, which is the exhibit, so I'll show you it now, so my, I'll check the box on...
We do some more, okay.
I'll check the box on testimony, and I'll, and I'll give you now the exhibit. So, here's, here's what I described. So, you can see there, here's, here's essentially what I'm describing is the housing, so the gray part of it, and which goes over the top of the structure itself, that's essentially the cutoff, okay, or the shield, to help reduce the sky glow. And then the lens itself is designed such that the, uh, the source, which is back behind the glass and underneath that shield or that, well, the shield, as I mentioned, will, uh, help direct the light towards the board only, and not have essentially a wash of light, uh, as you see on much older boards when you drop...
Okay, then the next part says, illuminating lights shall be arranged that the, the overglow and glare shall not be visible from any residential properties at any time of year. And it, the same reference, uh, demonstrate through compliance, through testimony, hearing, exhibits, and/or through necessary revisions to the submittal. And you, you think that you're not gonna, tell, tell me why you don't think a, a residential unit is, is not gonna be affected by this?
Um, so, the, the overglow, I kinda just, I just talked about, and I just testified to with the shielding.
Yeah.
But the glare, glare is, is, do you see the light source? Okay, so, I already, I already noted that the, this sign is, we've testified it's gonna be sixty-five, uh, sixty-one point five feet above the ground, fifty feet above Route two eighty-seven. So, that means it's gonna be, the sign's gonna be well above the, the residential dwellings closest to it. And the way that these light fixtures are arranged, they're close to the board and up, you'll never, you will not see, you're not seeing the lens or the source of light from the fixtures.
Next sixteen says, illuminating light shall be shielded from view of all vehicular traffic and shall be arranged so that there exists no glare to any vehicular traffic.
Same, same exact reasons as for the residential, you're not see, from that, even from two eighty-seven now, being above the road, you're not seeing the source of lights, that's, there is no glare, uh, being, uh, forced on the driver.
Thank you.
Just, just because we're, we're going through the, uh, the report here, so, we can comply with, with comment seventeen, that there won't be any intermittent flashing or blinking lights on the billboard, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, just going through to, uh, comment nineteen, um, there's not gonna be any fluorescent or phosphorescent holographic material painted on the billboard?
That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, the app, applicant stipulates to, uh, to comment twenty, we won't be providing any obscene or, uh, sexually indecent pornographic material, um, so we can comply with, with comment twenty. The, uh, billboard won't, won't contain any, any words such as stop or danger, anything that would create confusion as far as, as traffic concerns. Um, that was comment twenty-one. And, uh, comment twenty-three, uh, billboard won't be erected so as to cause any visual obstruction of traffic or impair traffic control devices, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, and we, we talked to that about not impacting the traffic within the parking lot.
And those were the majority of, uh, the comments that at least were open-ended, uh, from the TRC's memo.
I suggest that you show the, there's a detail of the billboard itself, um, so I think that'll show, uh, the board members the, uh, the fact that it's in the air, if you will, and that, and that the vehicles will be able to drive underneath it.
Yeah, I, I, I think so, we, I have the older, this is the older detail, so I'm gonna just say there's, there's one difference, there is one difference here, in that the column, um, this is, assume this is a view, um, it, that doesn't matter, I'm gonna say heading two eighty-seven south, uh, or towards the east. So, in that case, this, these two lines should be over here on the right-hand side, that's the only difference here. But what this shows in the billboard detail is, this is the site grade, so this is the parking lot grade, and then this is the grade of Route two eighty-seven, showing that two eighty-seven is obviously slightly higher than the site by about thirteen feet. And, uh, then you have the, the, the sign obviously above, uh, Route twenty-seven itself from there, so, uh...
That one, I think that one addresses twenty-four, um, where the placement of the pole is, the discrepancy.
Uh, yeah.
On the TRC?
Uh, no, actually, on the, on, yeah, on number twenty-four, um, no, I think that, that talks, no, that talks to another issue. And, uh, this is an existing condition. If we go to, I'll go back to the site plan sheet. Uh, you'll notice that there is a light in the back, where I'm proposing the two new parking spaces. There is a light pole that sits right in the middle of the drive aisle. I drove by there tonight, it's exactly the way it is, it's not an error in the site plan or not an error in the survey. It, I guess, when, whenever this was, this parking lot was re-striped in this configuration, i- it was set up that way. Uh, so, there's essentially one parking space, the one that's right behind that light pole, that has an issue. You, you probably don't have the ability to get in or out of it. But what I will say though is, is that, and which is why I showed this dimension of eighteen feet, uh, which is really twenty feet, to the base of that pole, but there is enough room for traffic to get by there as a one-way traffic aisle. And actually, per your code, Mark, when I looked up aisles, I think it's one twenty, it's one twelve dash eighty-eight. Fifteen feet is your minimum for a one-way drive, but for stall, where you have ninety-degree parking stalls, as we have here, you need, uh, twenty-five feet, no, twenty-four feet, I believe. I actually have thirty feet from the edge of the new striping to the ninety-degree stalls. So, there is enough there, except for the one stall that's by that pole, and that's it. That's the only one that's impacted, otherwise, everything's, is compliant with your, with your code here.
I can only assume at some point in the past, I think it was striped in the other direction originally, and they, some point in the past, somebody re-striped it.
To, to be honest, like I mentioned earlier, the drive aisles themselves are wide enough to not necessarily be one-way, but for some reason, they painted one-way arrows, and as you can see, the majority of them in the middle are all going to, towards two eighty-seven, just the outer ones are, are, allow you to go in a, in a, in a southerly direction, so I don't know what the thinking was there.
On the, uh, parking situation, uh, did you eliminate any handicapped parking?
Zero. They all stay, they all stay as, as, uh, they are. So...
Do you know how many, uh, parking spaces are available? And do you think, uh, the spaces are adequate for the size of the, uh, the building?
Um, there's a hundred and sixty-three parking spaces required based on that, that size of the building. And, and we assumed based on a, on a, on an off, on the one per two fifty, which would be an office space, but I, I don't know what happened in the zoning approval, if there was a change, if there's a different use in there, I don't know. We went on the office use, it says a hundred and sixty-three are required. There's a hundred and sixty out there today, so it's short by three, and we're proposing one more, so we're gonna bring it to one sixty-one. Again, today, I went by there at six, it was six twenty, and there were about twenty-five, thirty cars in the parking lot out of a hundred and sixty that are... I, I, and I went there on another day, I went there on a Saturday morning to look at the building height back in December, and there were roughly the same amount of cars there on a Saturday around noon. So, I, I, I'm just saying, I, I think there's plenty of parking in here. And I don't know, and again, the owner hasn't given us any indication. They didn't, they didn't have any problem with us removing or changing the parking stalls as we did, minor, of course, but changing the couple that we did.
Hmm, one last question with regards to item twenty. Can you tell us what the contact, I'm sorry, the content of the proposed billboard will be?
I can just say it won't be, it won't be obviously what's written here, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be various advertising that fits within the framework of, of your code and typically what you would see on, uh, as advertisers, uh, come to my client and are looking for space, as long as there's room or availability.
So, the billboard will be constructed and then leased to whoever?
The, the space will be, will be rented essentially to whomever wants to advertise on it.
Thank you.
The advertisements won't be, uh, site-specific, so the advertisements aren't intended to draw anybody to the office building, for example. So, I just wanted to, to make sure that was clear. I think that's probably perhaps the basis to the, uh, ordinance requiring the hundred-foot setback, so just wanted to put that on the record.
So, I, I was, I was essentially done when I spoke about lighting with my direct. We did touch base, what looks like from starting at item number fourteen through the end of Mr. Healy's memo. If you wanna go through, start at the beginning and just end at fourteen, if there's no objection?
I think, what I would suggest, because I think a lot of the comments, um, indicating that, that, that it complies.
Correct.
What I would suggest is perhaps touch on those that require some discussion, so, um, comment two?
Yes. I, I, I would have two and nine. I think we're the only two I had circled to provide some additional...
Yeah, and then, well, yeah, and then let's just hit four real quick, so that the, um, the angle of the two billboard faces, that's gonna be the thirty-five degrees?
Yeah, uh, that is, the angle of the faces from center would be about fifteen degrees as shown, so it's under, yeah, fifteen.
Okay. All right, so what that is, is if, um, you know, like most signs are double-sided, um, and billboards sometime, or typically have a V shape, and in order to qualify, qualify basically as one sign, you can't have a billboard where people can see both sides at once, but if they're angled no more than thirty-five degrees, so it's visible from each direction of two eighty-seven, it, you know, counts as one two-sided sign.
So, Mark, I'm gonna correct myself then, because I, I misinterpreted, that's one angle of one sign, so it's thirty degrees.
Thirty, okay.
Yeah, it's fifteen for each face.
Okay, so again, it's still not greater than thirty-five.
But it's thirty, to be correct for the record.
Okay, so then again, I would agree, I think, uh, if you could hit on two and nine.
Okay, so, uh, number two, uh, I'll just read the condition, billboard shall only be located on a lot finding on a state highway, which we are, and shall not be located, positioned, and designed so that the advertising surface is visible, they shall be located, positioned, and designed so that the advertising surface is visible only from the interstate highway and not local roadways or residential uses to the greatest degree possible. Uh, that's the key part, to the greatest degree possible, please remember that. And no portion of a billboard shall be more than two hundred feet from a property line adjoining the interstate highway. So, we meet that last portion, uh, but with respect to the visibility from anything other than an interstate highway, in this case, we're talking Elizabeth Avenue. When we go to the, when we go to the area, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the site plan. We zoom in on the aerial to a point where the, where the billboard is located, and Elizabeth Avenue is right here, and here's the sign.
You need a bigger, you need a bigger cursor.
I need a bigger cursor? I can, I can, uh, I can go to a screen if you want me to.
No, 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 just for the next time.
Okay. So, the, there's a, the stretch of our, of, there's, I'll start again how I wanna do this. If we come from Elizabeth, some south, down Brook, you're coming down Elizabeth Avenue, you go underneath the overpass, and you pass by the trees that are along the edge of the highway, and then you have an opening here about a hundred and fifty feet to where if a driver, now picture me for one moment, if I'm driving along the highway, I'm looking straight ahead. If we're looking at a billboard, Mr. Connor, our, our traffic engineer is gonna probably a little bit more testimony to Kona Vision, but we typically look at twenty degrees to where you're ideally seeing a sign. You, when you first come underneath the overpass, and you, if you were to move your head sixty degrees, okay, so three times, you know, a triple outside the Kona Vision where we wanna see the center, it's easily seen, you have to go to sixty to be able to catch a glimpse of the sign towards the back of that building. And then by the time you get to the end of that hundred and fifty feet, you have to obviously be a full ninety-degree turn to be able to look at that. The speed along Elizabeth Avenue is forty miles per hour there. At a hundred and fifty-foot distance, you have a, there's a two-and-a-half-second window with your head turned between sixty and ninety degrees, where you catch a, maybe a glimpse of that sign. So, and that is only by the driver, a passenger is not gonna be able to see that, it'll be blocked by the driver, it'll be, it'll be obscured. And, and it's the opposite if you're heading northbound on Elizabeth Avenue, a driver's not gonna see it, he's paying attention to the road and looking through. He'd be seeing the building and have to immediately turn his head ninety degrees to be able to see that sign, if he, if he even knew it was there when he was driving by it. So, that testimony being provided, I think there's, while you do have technically the ability to see that sign, uh, from Elizabeth Avenue, it's basically if you're standing still or walking along the sidewalk on, on the other side of the highway, or other side of Elizabeth Avenue, to be able to see it. Uh, but from a driver's standpoint, you're not seeing it at all, it's a blip.
If the billboard was located on the island that Mr. Healy likes, um, would that further reduce the likelihood that, um, a driver or a passenger would see it?
It's gonna be the same exact thing.
Okay.
Not gonna change it another way.
What about, uh, the, the school down there, what about Elizabeth Avenue School? And then, I don't know what the, exactly those buildings are, right on the edge of the outline to, I guess that would be the south there?
Okay, so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to the school, and so which is to the bottom, and I'm moving the cursor around. So, the school property will not see the sign. So, we're, 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 they're gonna see the back of the V, so there's, and so in the same testimony when it comes to lights, not gonna see the source, so there. The, across the street, Elizabeth Avenue, uh, that is a warehouse building, uh, there, and, uh, the view through there has to go through the, through the building itself, so I don't expect, uh, visibility, uh, limited visibility, let's call it, from that location.
Is it possible for cars that are coming through Campus Drive and making a right Elizabeth Avenue to go to the pool?
So, so if you're coming down Campus Drive, could you see the sign?
Yes, the, right, you're, you're coming down, uh, in order to make a right, uh, to drop off students to the, the school.
If you were standing, because, because it's, and it's pretty much a four-way intersection, as you're approaching the last stretch of Campus Drive, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna be able to catch a glimpse of it, just, yeah, you'll be facing right at it, but obviously looking to make your turn and...
But again, it's, it's to locate the sign, um, where it's not visible to the greatest degree possible. And that was our, that was our focus, because it doesn't appear that there's a spot you could do it, and to eliminate the view in its entirety, so we tried to choose a spot that limited it to the highest degree.
Let me just clarify, uh, real quick, so, um, because it is an important distinction. This, this isn't actually my report, it's the Technical Review Committee. This, this isn't actually my report, it's the Technical Review Committee. So, uh, we did get comments from the other members of the Technic, Technical Review Committee. When the application came in and, uh, they shifted the building over slightly, I had a conversation with John House, who's the Director of Fire Prevention, 'cause I wanted to find out from him, did he have a concern about it being closer to the building than originally proposed? And this basically summarizes my conversation with him. He, he did not have a major concern with it being in its proposed location thirteen-point-three. And he basically said, "I'd prefer it to be in the other island, but I don't have a major concern." So that, that's where that comment comes from.
So that's number two, and then number nine, oh, you wanted me to talk to number four. Oh, we did already, we did already with the degrees.
Well, let, let me, if I could, um, so on the issue of two, I, I think it's a question of whether you, you, you need the variance at all. And then if you do need the variance, 'cause I think what your testimony was really saying is, in order to say that you don't need a variance, you would need to prove that there's, that you've, that it's been located so as not to be visible to the greatest degree possible. And I, you know, I think, you know, there are other locations on the site. It is possible to locate it in the far back corner, a thousand feet from Elizabeth Avenue. Um, I mean, that is possible. I know that'd create other variances, but it is possible.
Right.
So, I, you know, I, I, what I'm, maybe, I think the testimony, at least that you've provided so far, is, 'cause it will be visible from Elizabeth, but I think the testimony you've provided so far is, but a driver's gonna see it if they crane their neck ninety degrees.
And for two and a half seconds.
For two and a half seconds.
Yes.
So it's, so far, your testimony is, I think, I mean, I, it's still my opinion that I think you need the variance. But you're saying is, they'll have, there'll be zero impact, because you're gonna have to crane your neck going forty miles per hour. And if you do that, you'll see it for a very split second.
I, I, I'm gonna go further is, it, you have to know that the sign is there to want to look for it, to be able to, at the instant you go underneath the bridge, to be able to turn your head, go, "Oh, wow, there is a sign. What's being, what's being advertised today?", and turn your head back. That doesn't, that's not happening.
Yeah.
Well, how, how far above two eighty-seven is this sign?
Fifty feet, fifty feet above.
You're not looking straight. You're gonna be looking up at it, right?
No, we're not talking from two eighty-seven. We're talking from Elizabeth Avenue.
Well, from, okay, from where Elizabeth Avenue.
It's, it's even higher. So it's even, you're turning and you're looking, and you're looking at it up in an angle.
People on Elizabeth Avenue on the other side of two eighty-seven would probably be able to see it, because it's higher, correct?
Uh, uh, so when you're saying on the other, no, on the other side of Elizabeth Avenue? Yeah, we, we, we looked at that, yeah, so I, I understand the, the question. So you're saying, if you're beyond the bridges to the north, will you see it on the other side of two eighty, on the other side of Elizabeth Avenue? I don't think you're going to see it on the other side of Elizabeth Avenue with the, the way that the road topo runs, the vegetation on both sides of the highways, you now have it on both, uh, and any other structures that are there, including the, I think there's a Delta gas station that's there that provides a, a significant blockage of any view of even the highway, uh, as you approach from that direction.
Yeah, but the, the Delta gas station's not sixty-five feet high.
No, but you're looking, but it, right, but you're, you're also not looking at it up at an angle. The angle in which you're looking at it is down at three and a half feet from the ground. That's typically where you sit when you're in a car.
I, I remember when, when we had the hearings on the other two billboards. And there was significant discussion and issues with visibility on the other side of two eighty-seven. What's different about this one?
Zero. It's the same. And I'll, and I'll say that I went there tonight. And I wa, and I was, I was curious at night whether you do see any of the billboards. So, and I think this relates to what we're, what this, you know, the verbiage here about, uh, to the greatest degree possible. Okay, so, so we're not, we're not told here in here to, to block, excuse, I'm sorry, that, I, we're not, we're not told here that it shouldn't, it absolutely cannot be visible. Um, it, it, there, but there shouldn't be a negative impact. But when you go on, uh, I forget the name, Mercury, and you go to Nassau Park, I drove there tonight. And if you're at Nassau Park, technically, it's all residential, and you can look through, and you can see the sign on the one that exists now, closest, you know, that's already out there today, uh, the one closest to this property, you could see it there. So it's visible, and it's visible to the residents around there. Would I say there's a, a negative impact? No, the light fixtures, as I'm testifying, the light fixtures do not provide, there's not an impact of light. You do not see the source of the light fixtures. But yet you can see the board, much like you could see the, the lights of all the commercial businesses on the other side of the highway as well. It, this is gonna have essentially a, for, for certain locations on the other side of the highway, you may be able to see the billboard, but it would not have a negative impact on those properties. And, and I can say that, because we're also too, meeting the requirements, uh, of the three hundred feet, say, from the residential. We're over that. We're meeting that setback requirement. Uh, and we are indeed reducing the impact to the greatest degree possible, uh, from Elizabeth Avenue.
And as you, as you had mentioned before, Mr. Scapin, it's not, not dissimilar to the other billboard that's located a little over a thousand feet away, right?
Correct.
Also assuming that you're able to minimize the impact across two eighty-seven, because you, the boards are going to be angled so that it would be extremely difficult to read or see the message that you're conveying.
Right, and that's, and that goes to the angle, in that where we stay, as Mr. Healy pointed out, you know, if we get wider on the angle, now that message is more visible. We're, we're, we're staying under the thirty-five, we're at thirty. So we have enough of an angle where it's key to go to two eighty-seven, that's the focus. And then anywhere else, it's, it's more difficult. Unless you, you know, travel, uh, uh, in a, in a, you know, much further away, and now that angle is changing, but now you're much further away from the billboard. The angle's gonna get better for you to read the face, but you're that much further away that you're not gonna be able to read what's on there, or be impacted by the light source.
The other thing I will say that's positive, since it's static, I don't, it, it's not, obviously, one of the conditions. It can't be blinking or flashing. Now, I, I don't care what the testimony you or anyone else may give for a digital billboard. Every time it changes the ad, that's the same as having a blinking light, because that's attracting attention. At least this isn't that type of a.
Not that.
This is a static billboard. Mr. Chairman, just one more question. The, um, the thousand-foot requirement that's in our ordinance, is that, that's also a DOT requirement? Is that true?
There is one, but your code is written differently than DOT.
Okay.
We, we got a, we did receive a DOT permit for this. But they're not, they don't say from the, the fullest extent of the structure. So, you know, in this case, it'd be the edge of the, of the catwalk, uh, to the edge of the catwalk on the outer edges of both signs. We're essentially do it center-to-center at that point for DOTs.
And does DOT, and, and, and their requirement is the thousand feet?
Thousand feet.
Do you know, in your experience, have they, um, do they, do they even have the ability to grant less than that? Do they ever grant less than that?
Well, again, it's, but what we're talking about here is from the center, where if I did that, we would be.
But the reason I'm asking is, it's a statutory requirement. The reason I ask that is, I think it speaks to the greatest possible question.
Right. Recognize that when we did the, with our permit, we have the permit based on the location that we had shown in that shifted further away from the building location. That's where it was granted by, by.
And, and, and that's exactly right, though, because we, we can't actually locate the billboard anywhere on the property, because we wouldn't, we would not have received a permit from, from the DOT. So we're, we are limited where we can place the billboard, not just because of the township's ordinance, but also because of permitting from the, from the DOT. So it restricts us quite a bit.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But you could move, are you saying, though, you could move to the?
We, we could, because that was the originally permitted location.
However, then we are in, uh, we're departing from the township's ordinance, because as Mr. Scapinets just testified to, the, the township's ordinance is, is very slightly different than the DOT standards for the thousand-foot.
I understand that. I think the board understands that. And if, and if that's something the board wants to do, then we'll deal with that. Talking about twenty feet, we're not talking about.
Mr. Scapinets, do you have any opinion of the, the location shifting to one island or the other? Would it make it any more or less visible to drivers either on campus or Elizabeth?
No. It's the same, I think it's the same either way. In, in another direction, we're, we're only, again, a twenty-foot difference is not gonna have a, a detrimental or a, a change, enough of a change that anyone would notice, uh, in accordance with my testimony.
And then, to the degree it may matter to the board, does your client have a preference?
No.
You're, you're actually, um, you're gaining a parking space if you move it? Another parking space?
No, you would, it would, no, it would end up being a wash, 'cause we ended up getting one, rid of a parking space in, in the island that we shifted to, so I would.
Well, frankly, in my opinion, I don't even wanna talk about the parking. I've been driving by that place for twenty years. I don't think I've ever seen any more cars than you've seen the two times that you've been there. What the problem is, if it's a problem, I don't know. But, uh, part of granting a variance for the use in that building for a religious institution was the fact that it wasn't a desirable business enterprise. So, yeah. One parking space, two parking space, far as I'm concerned, it's empty, ninety percent empty, all the time.
So if, uh, let me just make it clear, though, so everyone's aware. If we did, if we were, if the board was inclined to agree with Mr. Healy, and we shift the sign back to where we had shown it previously, which is where my hand is now, I'm moving it on the, on the screen. We shift the sign over, um, you notice that this parking space is closer to two eighty-seven, but that doesn't mean we're gonna, the sign's not gonna get any closer. What will happen is, is, as I talked, as mentioned earlier, I believe, Mr. Shepherd, what you had asked about it being a flag. We now go from a flag to more of a center mount sign. So we're simply gonna shift the mount to be more towards center for that sign being in that location, so we can maintain that the, the, the structure itself still stays five-point-four feet or greater away from Route two eighty-seven.
Counsel, does your, uh, does your client here, does he also own the billboard to the south?
No.
That billboard is digital, correct? And this, and this one is static, if I'm.
The one, the one, the one immediately adjacent to us is static, that the next one down, closer towards, um, uh, Easton Avenue, is digital.
Okay, so this one won't change, won't change at all, like, like the other one does, okay. Do you have any other testimony?
I'm, I'm done.
Not for Mr. Scapinets. Uh, we have traffic and, uh, planning testimony.
Presentation, then.
Thank you.
Do, just, uh, for procedural purposes, do you open it up to the public at the, uh, end?
We'll open it up at the end.
Okay, thank you. So, Chairman Thomas, I would ask if I can just introduce, uh.
Well, let's swear them in, if we can. Can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the. You swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Hughes, uh, can you just, uh, for the, uh, for the board, can you place your credentials on the record and your experience, educational background?
Absolutely. Um, so I'm a project manager at Dynamic Traffic. Um, we have a business address of two forty-five Main Street, Suite one-ten in Chester, New Jersey. I've been working as a traffic engineer for approximately five to six years. Have a professional engineering license in the state of New Jersey, which is still in current standing. Bachelor's degree in science.
Thank you.
Is, is Dynamic Traffic related to Dynamic Engineering?
Yes, it's a sister company.
So, uh, Mr. Hughes, you prepared a site visibility study?
Yes, that's correct.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have these in, in paper copies. They're eleven by seventeen, I believe. Do you mind if I hand them out to the, uh, to the board members? We can mark this as, uh, exhibit A-one. That's acceptable?
Yep.
I'm gonna do it old-school style.
Thank you. Right, oops, thank you. Thank you. And it, it's the same that's on the board there?
Yes, that's correct. So what we're passing around right now is a site visibility study, uh, two pages. One looking northbound along two eighty-seven, one looking southbound along two eighty-seven. And I'll, as I'm going through, we'll talk in some more detail about what exactly we're, we're depicting in each of these diagrams. Um, it's okay with you? All right, so, first thing I wanna do is kind of establish some, some terms and definitions for, um, how we perceive, how we see things as we're driving, and things of that nature. So as we're driving around, your eyes are constantly looking around, observing, and taking in information and perceiving things around you, um, essentially scanning, right? So when your eyes stop on something in particular, we call this a fixation. Um, so your eyes stop moving, and you're now fixated on a, a particular object or item. And the next part of that is called a dwell, which is what we define as successive fixations. Not necessarily a fixation that's, you know, two seconds or so ever long, um, but rather multiple of those fixations over a time. So if you look at the same object multiple times within a minute, whether it's continuous or not, we would call that a dwell. Um, and there are several studies conducted by the federal government, um, looking at driver characteristics, um, humanistic studies, um, about how they perceive as they're driving, what, how long are they looking at, um, signs, or objects, or other items in their surroundings. Um, and one of these studies was conducted by the, uh, NHTSA, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And what they found in this study is that fixations less than a continuous two seconds uh, do not increase risk, um, to the driver or drivers around them. Um, and remember that a fixation is when your eyes will stop on something of interest. Um, now, the FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, they also conducted, um, a similar study, um, but particular to billboards. So they analyzed, again, the humanistic natures of drivers, um, as they're looking at the billboards, analyzing how long are they looking at them, how many times, things of that nature. Um, and they found that for a, a static sign in particular, uh, the average fixation was under half a second. Um, only about point-three seconds or so at a time that somebody would be looking at a static sign. Now, going back to the dwell time, they found that the average was a range of between about point-seven seconds and one-point-four seconds. Now, again, that doesn't mean they're looking at it for an entire one-point-four seconds at once. It's multiple of those fixations that add up to, um, those, those numbers. And so what they concluded by this, being that it's less than the two seconds established by NHTSA of not increasing risk, that, you know, yes, when the billboards are present, people do look at them, obviously. Um, but not so much in the sense that safety is compromised or that there's any inherent increase in risk, um, with the placement of billboards, whether it's static or digital. Now, to get more specific as to your sight while you're driving, uh, Mr. Scapinets already kind of mentioned our cone of vision, or center of gaze. Um, this is, again, the area in which you generally have a clear view of the, uh, of your surroundings. Specifically, it's a forty-degree cone, so if you're looking down the middle, twenty degrees on either side would be that cone of vision or the center of gaze. Now, the FHWA, again, they have a, um, publication, the MUTCD, which establishes roadway signs, um, guide signs, things of that nature. And they established that forty-degree cone of vision for the placement of traffic control devices such as signs, um, such as traffic signals, things of that nature. Um, so it's a, um, industry-wide standard to have this twenty-degree or forty-degree cone of vision um, as your, um, as your viewpoint. Now, outside of that, you also have your peripheral vision, which is a little bit further out. Um, and in this peripheral vision, your ability to distinguish shape is rather weak, but your ability to distinguish lights, movements such as brake lights, a driver switching lanes, things of that nature, um, is still strong. So even if you're glancing away from outside of that forty-degree cone and looking into your peripheral vision, you would still be able to, uh, perceive and react to something that would be happening, uh, in front of you. would be happening, uh, in front of you on the road. Now, as it relates to the proposed site, we take all those characteristics, all those standards, um, and apply them to the billboard location and how it relates to the stream of traffic, um, approaching it. So going on to the first exhibit, uh, the site visibility study, traveling northbound, after we leave these marked, this is a one. Um, what this is showing is traveling northbound on 287 as you're approaching the sign, and it becomes visible about 1,000 feet away, uh, from the sign, is when you would enter to, into that 40-degree cone of vision that I mentioned. And it's in those, in that 40-degree for about 460 feet, or based on the speed limit, 65 miles an hour is about a little under five seconds, 4.8 seconds. Then, in addition to that, after that, uh, 460 feet, you get into your peripheral vision for another, uh, three seconds or so. So the total visibility time of the billboard traveling northbound is just shy of eight seconds, 7.9 to be exact. And as we remembered, the average fixation time for the static billboards is about .3 seconds. Um, and traveling southbound, so now moving on to page two of the site visibility study. Um, again, same idea, so as you're traveling southbound, and I should point out on this diagram, so you'll see three, uh, yellow lines which are projecting out of the billboard, which are, if you're looking at the left side of the page, from when it first becomes visible, the second point is when it, um, then enters into peripheral vision, and then that last point closest to the billboard is when it would no longer be within that, um, that cone of vision. And again, it becomes visible about 1,000 feet from the billboard and is visible for a total of about nine seconds, um, before you wouldn't be able to perceive it anymore. Um, and again, significantly more than the average time of 1.4 seconds, which is the total time that somebody has typically looked at these signs. Um, so there's more than adequate visibility, um, at this site for this particular type of sign, um, for this particular section of roadway, uh, for it to be visible. And, you know, the other part of it too is it's, again, it's static. So once you perceive the message, if it's not something you're interested in, you're not going to look at it again, you're just going to keep driving. And your driving is essentially your primary task, so you're not going to, you know, look away for too long from your driving task to try to read every last word on a billboard, you're going to be primarily focused on the task of driving. Um, and that relates to, um, some different safety studies that, that have also been, been conducted that concluded that there's really no statistic relationship between the construction of billboards and accident occurrences. They found that, you know, the placement of a billboard, static or digital, doesn't inherently result in an increase in, um, accidents in those locations. Um, so, you know, with that, that's really, from the traffic standpoint, really all there is to it. Again, there's more than adequate visibility time, um, for this particular proposal. Um, and I do feel that it's, it's an appropriate location, it's, um, appropriately designed for, um, the suitability of this site.
I have no questions.
Anything from the board?
I just have one question. So what is the so-called sweet spot of when you're traveling to actually see the sign and be able to read it?
Um, that, that would be the, the 40-degree cone of vision, your typical, um, visibility cone. And if I'm going back to the, the numbers, it was about five seconds traveling north and seven seconds traveling south, so still more than enough time within that typical zone, um, to be able to perceive and message.
I have a question. Excuse me. Did your traffic study include any of the, um, equivalent, uh, uh, conditions that you examined for Route 287 for the, uh, the local streets? Uh, for example, driving on Elizabeth Avenue, turning left to look...
Right.
...what the sign says...
Right.
...and then from Campus Drive, if you're making especially a right turn, uh, delaying your turn...
Sure.
...in order to read the sign and somebody coming from behind you.
So, not specifically, we didn't do any, like, actual calculations as far as the time of read or, or anything like that, because as Mr. Scapinets already kind of attested to, at least from Elizabeth Avenue, your visibility time is so short, and you wouldn't even realize the sign is there unless you knew, or until you were underneath the overpass, that by the time you realize that there's a sign there, you don't have time to, one, look all the way over to your, your left, um, to be able to read it, um, but you'd be taking away, again, from your primary driving task, which, if you feel that you're inherently taking yourself away from that, you wouldn't. Um, and as far as, you know, Campus Drive, again, it, it'll become visible as you're approaching Elizabeth Avenue, um, but it'll be directly in front of you, essentially, right within that general, um, that cone that we talk about. Um, and you are approaching a stop sign, which again would be still right in front of you, um, so I wouldn't anticipate there to be any, any issues with those.
Is the reason you didn't do that, I'm assuming, because that's not the intended audience?
Correct, right. The intent is for it to be visible for the 287 traffic, um, not for Elizabeth Avenue or Campus Drive. The 287 traffic is, is our, um, our target audience.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one question, Mr. Chairman. So I, I, forgive me if this was answered, but the yellow lines obviously are those sightlines.
Yes.
Um, and, you know, from plan view, they're showing going through trees.
Yes.
But, um, is, I'm assuming that, that the answer is that this is going to be above the tree line?
Yes, yes.
At all these different sightlines?
Yes, correct.
And that, um, is there any intention, I mean, I know, I know those were, are within the right-of-way of 287, uh, is there any intention or need on the part of the applicant to, um, seek removal of those trees from, um, presumably DOT?
Yeah, certainly if, within the DOT right-of-way, that becomes necessary, then we would have to approach them to get the proper permits, um, to be able to, you know, trim the vegetation. It wouldn't involve any removal of a full tree or anything like that, it would just be trimming it to, to ensure the visibility is there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hughes. So we're, uh, we'll wrap things up with, uh, Mr. Flynn, our planner.
Swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do. Uh, so for the record, Matt Flynn, F-L-Y-N-N. Uh, my education comes from Rutgers, I have a master's degree in planning and public policy, I have my professional planners license in the state of New Jersey, as well as my AICP certification, sorry, uh, which, I have my AICP certification, which is the national certification for planners. Um, I've testified before this board, I think, either this board or the planning board, and, uh, dozens of other, uh, boards across the state.
Oh, accept.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so just to go right into it, the board has heard, at this point, we're looking at one tax lot, which is Block 500.01, Lot 1. It's a approximately 3.5 acre property in the BI zone, which is the business and industry zone, uh, where billboards are a permitted conditional use, um, which basically means that we don't have to look at that site suitability test for when a use is, uh, not permitted or specifically prohibited in the zone. Uh, in other words, the value of that conditional use is implied in the zoning ordinance by virtue of the fact that it is permitted, um, as long as certain conditions are met. And if those conditions are not met, we need to request a D3 conditional use variance, um, which is what we're doing tonight. Um, basically, there's about 23 conditions for this zone, for this use, um, as a conditional use. We comply with all but one or two of those conditions. Um, the one that we are definitely requesting relief from is the minimum distance of the billboard to the existing building on the property. Again, we're proposing 13.3 feet, whereas we need 100 feet per the ordinance. Um, and the other, the other condition that if we, if we need relief for it, if the board determines, uh, then we will, will request it, um, which is whether the, the billboard is, whether the applicant has taken, uh, has used the greatest, to the greatest extent possible, limited the visibility from local or county roadways. Um, so visibility from roadways other than the interstate highway. Um, I think that in this case, there is substantial testimony on the record regarding how, based on all of the conditions and all of the requirements for where a billboard can be located, uh, the applicant has made do and found the, the location on the site where the least amount of variances, um, are, are, are required. Um, and to that end, I would say that, to the extent that the applicant has, uh, to the greatest extent possible, limited visibility to Elizabeth Avenue, um, it's my opinion that the applicant has, um, again, by virtue of the fact that we did have several other conditions to look at, um, and to, um, and to deal with. Uh, so to get into the positive criteria for those, um, for those, uh, conditions, um, the, the use as a whole, a billboard is a message, is a message board that benefits the public with, uh, real-time communication, promoting the businesses in this community, both local businesses and regional businesses, um, including inherently beneficial uses such as schools, hospitals, and religious, um, practices.
Wait, wait, wait. What did you say?
I'm not saying that billboards are inherently beneficial use, I'm saying that they could potentially, uh, promote those types of uses.
How?
By advertising for them.
So like a advertisement for a charity, something to that extent?
Okay.
Right. Yeah. Um, so I would say that, uh, state policies recognize the land use as essential to economic development. We do have the NJ DOT, um, saying that this is a permitted location that meets state regulations. We do have that, uh, required separation between this proposed billboard and the other billboard to the, uh, to the east of the property. Um, in terms of the negative criteria, this really, when it comes to billboards, comes down to visibility in terms of who can see it, um, traffic in terms of if there's any, uh, distraction to drivers, and brightness, um, basically, will it light up people's backyards or anything like that? I think in this case, there is extensive testimony on the record in, in regards to all three of those things. In terms of visibility, we, we heard that, um, the, the primary, uh, the primary visibility is along Interstate, uh, 287, um, and any visibility along Elizabeth Avenue would be, uh, constrained and would, would not be easily, um, visible. Uh, in terms of driver distraction, we just heard from the prior witness that there will be none. And in terms of brightness, we're looking at a static billboard, not, uh, not a, um, a digital billboard with any blinking or, or flashing or anything like that. Um, to the extent that we are requesting a variance for that visibility to Elizabeth Avenue, um, again, I don't think that, I think that there is testimony on the record regarding that it will not be easily visible from Elizabeth Avenue. And again, the key word from the ordinance would be, uh, the greatest extent possible. And in this case, we do have, uh, a lot of constraints in terms of where this, uh, sign could be located, uh, so again, we wanted to minimize the amount of variances that were, that are being requested. Um, to the extent that the board is concerned about overcrowding in terms of that sign being too close to the existing building, um, I think it's important to note that the existing building only occupies 13.6% coverage on the property, whereas 50% is what's permitted. So as of right, we could get a much larger building here. So to the extent that we are looking at a sign that's a little too close to the, to the building, uh, again, we're looking at a substantially smaller building than what would be permitted in the BI zone. Similarly, FAR is about half of what's permitted in terms of that existing building. Um, and overall, we're looking at a functionally innocuous, uh, land use in terms of no traffic generation, no noise, no waste, or anything like that. Um, in terms of zone impacts, again, we, we looked at the location that would require the least amount of variances. Of course, good planning is all about balancing, and I think the applicant has, has done that in this case. Um, promoting goals of the master plan, including economic development. Um, this is, this is a commerce-oriented use, um, and a use that's less intense and less impactful than many of the other land uses that would be permitted here, um, from a traffic standpoint and from a, from a land use intensity standpoint. Um, just to rattle through some of the conditions that we comply with, just to, uh, just to go through that one more time. Um, billboards shall be located in the BI zone, check. Uh, they have to front the interstate highway, check. Shall not be more than 200 feet from the property line adjoining the highway, check. Uh, shall not be within 200 feet of a right-of-way, uh, of a county or local road, we have that. Only one billboard per lot, uh, not within 1,000 feet of any other billboard, not within 300 feet of a residential property, um, complying with the bulk requirements of the BI zone, looking at it as a, as a building, uh, not within 50 feet of any other property line. Um, all of those things, I think we, we do have substantial built-in separation requirements, uh, that minimize any impacts that the, that the billboard has on any of the adjoining properties. Um, and with that, I think I can close and open myself up to questions.
Thank you.
No negatives.
Go ahead. You want to go ahead? Want to go ahead, Carrie?
You have no negative criteria at all?
I would say that none of the negative criteria rise to the level of being substantial.
I'm sorry?
Uh, none of the potential impacts ha, rise to the level of being substantial.
Other questions?
Yes, I just wanted, uh, clarification, you mentioned the benefit of, um, real-time communication. Was that reference to, I, I wasn't sure what that was referring to. Was it real-time communication?
Right, so basically, um, drivers being able to receive messages while they're driving on the roadway.
Okay, I was just asking about the, the reference to real-time, and you said it's not digital, and so it's not updating, so just...
That, that comment might have been out of place, actually.
Okay.
I, I'll admit that. I'm reading from my notes.
Any else?
I have a question for Frank. Um, so Frank, that, the one, um, standard that talks about, that we've been talking about the most, probably, uh, the visibility from Elizabeth Avenue, um, as you know, in this report, you know, a lot of times I'm saying, you know, complies, or doesn't comply when it's something that's measurable, you know, if it's supposed to be 200 feet and it's 210, in the report, I'm saying it's 210, so it, so it complies. Um, when is the standard that says to the greatest degree possible, you know, I can't make that determination by looking at a set of plans, uh, so they have to testify to that. Um, so I guess my question to you then is, um, I'm assuming then the board has the ability to make the determination or interpretation that they've demonstrated, that they've done, that they've minimized a view from Elizabeth Avenue to the greatest degree possible. Um, and, and then, and that may, perhaps that might be one of the first discussions the board might want to make, because if they, if they do determine that they've proven that it's, um, you know, it's the, it's the least visible to the greatest degree possible, then there wouldn't be a variance for that. And then we can move to what the variances actually are.
I think you're, I think you've described it correctly. I mean, ultimately, it's up to each individual board member to make that determination in their consideration of it. But I would agree that if the board, if the board agrees, um, you know, that they have provided sufficient testimony to meet that greatest degree possible, then the variance would not be necessary.
Okay, and then I think, um, then the second, I think, discussion the board may want to have is then those two variances that we, uh, or those two issues, I should say, that play against each other, which is the 1,000-foot from the, the other billboard, um, and then the separation from the building. Um, because if they move it a little bit away from the building, now they're going to be slightly less than 1,000 feet from the other, from the other billboard.
Yeah.
You know, and, and is one of those issues more important to the board than the other? If you feel that moving it away from the building a little bit is more important to you, um, then again, that's going to create the variance for the 1,000-foot separation, it'll be like 900, and I forget what it was, 980, something like that, we should probably get clarification on those numbers, but, you know, it'd be that order of magnitude. So I think, again, I think it's two main discussions for the board and their deliberations.
And if I could just clarify, uh, Mr. Flynn, so if the board were to decide to locate the billboard at the previous location, the planning testimony you gave this evening would also be applicable for the billboard at that location as well, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the only other point that I just want to make, just in terms of clarity, uh, the, and disagree with me if you disagree with me, basically, my interpretation of that greatest degree possible is, uh, the variance isn't necessary if it's not in the least visible spot on the site. Uh, it comes down to all of those considerations that, that we went through, including what other variances would, would we trigger if we moved it elsewhere? Um, and that's all I wanted to...
As well as the DOT's permit?
Exactly.
I have a question for Mr. Flynn. Um, did your study include, um, I don't know how well you're familiar with Frank Did your study include, I don't know how well you're familiar with Franklin Township, we pride ourselves to be diverse, and I actually Googled the, the Ashram, out of curiosity. And I know many of us drive by, and as someone else on the board here noted, noted, you don't see too many cars on those 160 spots. However, when I look at their website, on the schedule of events for 2022, which was last, last year, there are, let's see, January 13th, March 1st, April 13, May 31st, July 7th, July 13, August 13, I'm sorry, October 13th, October 24th, November 8th, December 31st, and January 1st. These are their festivals or religious, whatever, holidays. I'm assuming that during those times, and again, pointing to the safety of having a billboard pretty much in the middle or right before you get into the parking area, how concerned are you that the increased traffic during these days would be a significant concern?
Yeah, so to fall back on the engineer's testimony, I think he said that his, his biggest concern, if he had one, would be cars speeding through that area and potentially hitting the, the sign, which would, which would be rare, but I would say that that would be even a rarer occurrence if there were plenty of cars in the parking lot. I think that cars would be moving even slower in that case. Thanks.
Other questions?
Mark, you think, you think Carl was worried, wanted, wanted it moved to that other spot because of being too close to the building?
Yeah, well, it was John House, the Director of Fire Prevention. I, I, and I don't even, I, to characterize it, I, 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 I actually don't think the word was concerned. I, I think his, I think he did use the word "I'd prefer." I think, you know, as Director of Fire Prevention, I think he would prefer that it be a little bit further away from the building, just because I think fire prevention officials don't want any potential obstruction to getting to a building in the case of an emergency.
He didn't say it was a hazard.
No, 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 absolutely not. I mean, what's, what's the, the, the language in here? And I actually went over the language with him, because I had the discussion. I said, so if I, I mean, I'll, I'll read it. I think he said, "It's, it's not a major concern, but I would prefer that it be in the other location." That's, that's literally what he said, and I went over that wording with him. So if we say this, will you be okay? And he said, yes, exactly.
Kind of where I'm at, too. I'd prefer it to be...
And then he, yes.
Hey, let's take care of one thing before we get in too involved in, in the discussion. We'll open to the public, if there's any, any public here, which there doesn't seem to be, so we'll close to the public and take care of that. Any discussion, comments, questions, whatever, from the board?
Yeah, I, I have, I, I've looked at this, and my take on the section about visible from a local roadway goes as follows. The, the, the billboard would be permitted in this, in this B1 zone, and the requirement is that putting it in this B1 zone, you have to minimize the, I'm looking for the language here, minimize its view from Elizabeth Avenue to the greatest degree possible. And it seems to me that they've done that, that they've, they've taken this piece of property and they've, they've figured out how to make this the least offensive appearance of the billboard to Elizabeth Avenue or to Mercury or the end of the other streets. So I think they've resolved that, and I think that, that I would be more comfortable going with the, the initial idea of it being on the island as opposed to being closer to the building. So they'd need two variances. I don't think they need a variance for the, the location in terms of making it minimize the view. I don't think we need a variance for that, but I think you do need two for, because I think it should be placed at the, the original location. That's my thought.
Any other comments?
I don't disagree with anything that Mrs. Shepherd said. I do have a couple thoughts about whether or why we need this. The one thing, if it were completely meeting the conditions and 100 feet away from the building, it may be a little bit different, but I'm not sure where the benefit is here to anyone other than the person, or this is something I'm throwing out to think about. I'm not sure how I completely feel about this project. But it's five feet from a building, even if we move it 39 feet from the building, it's supposed to be 100 feet. I think that they've done as much as possible with the shape of the property and where everything is located surrounding it to minimize the view, but I don't know if that means that I need to accept the fact that you're still going to see it from Elizabeth Avenue and from Campus Drive. I have to think about that, and I'd be happy to hear any other comments from board members.
I think your, I think your, your, your point that, do we really need this, is, is one that I, I hadn't really considered. The, I don't think that there's any real benefit to the people who live in town. It's simply a, a benefit to the people who have brought the application. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not convinced that, that it's, that it's something that should be granted.
Well, there was certainly testimony from our planner about it being both beneficial from an economic standpoint, that sense that it can help local businesses within the township. It can help local business, it can help businesses throughout the state. And then the other, the other comment that was made was that it can help nonprofits, hospitals, charities, churches, temples. So there, there certainly are benefits that, that run to the, to the use, and it, the use is permitted in the zone, conditionally permitted, yes, but the site is suitable for the use, per the ordinance.
Just so I can perhaps help shape the discussion of the board, I, I, I think the last comment is, is the most significant in that it is a permitted use. So this is not a D1 use variance where you have to make the determination whether the use should be permitted or not because the site is particularly suitable. This is a permitted use. And what they need to, and when they have, and, and in doing that, and in making it a permitted use, make it a conditionally permitted use, the council, after a lot of study with the planning board for a pretty considerable amount of time, came up with these 25 different conditions that they have to meet. And when somebody's proposing a, an application that doesn't comply with any one of those standards, they have to prove that the site remains suitable despite those deviations. So, you know, and that, that is what the, the standard is for a conditional use variance. It's not whether to permit it or not. It is permitted. It's, but they have deviations. Are there some reasons why those deviations are such that the site is no longer suitable for that use?
Mr. Healy, I'm a little confused as a new member. The permitted use for this is when the billboard is at least 100 feet from the building, yes?
So, no, it, it is a, it is a permitted use.
It's a permitted use, but in this case, this particular billboard is right next 30 feet, I'm sorry, 13 feet from the building. And the fact that it's a narrow driveway and it's very small parking, I honestly have failed personally, with all due respect, to see how this particular project benefits the public of Franklin Township.
So, so again, the use is a permitted use. It's permitted in the zone. It's not a question of whether, whether the use is beneficial, not beneficial. The, the township's ordinance permits this in the zone. It just goes to whether the site is still suitable, notwithstanding the deviation. We've heard extensive testimony this evening that the parking lot can still function adequately with the elimination of the parking space. We're actually picking up an additional parking space, and I believe both, both our traffic engineer and our professional engineer testified that there are no traffic concerns on the site.
So my thought is, the, the issue or the concern seems to be around the distance of the billboard from the property. And it, it being a beneficial use, my thought would be in terms of, we talked about the, the traffic, and is it, does it interfere? Does it cause issues? The proximity to, I'm just throwing this out there, the proximity to the building is the issue. It's the, the size, is it too big? Is it congested? That seems to be the heart of the issue of the, the item where e- even though this is benefi- this is a, it has the use, but it has to meet these conditions, this seems to be the, the crux of the, or, or the greatest concern, is the distance from the property. So I guess I'm asking the applicant, I mean, or I, I guess I'm throwing it out to the board, if that is a concern, is it mainly because it would be, it would crowd the area? It does not appear, at least from the testimony, that there is a safety issue. So it would be, is the proper, is the issue the proximity because it just, the look and feel to the community or the surrounding areas that this billboard, but we also said, it was also testified, the height, the distance is up high enough. So listening to all the testimony, that was my biggest concern. Is it, is it going to feel crowded in the community? I think the, the testimony was sufficient that it would not be, it would be visible but in a, in the smallest of ways. So I, I don't feel that that is really impacting the application. I'm just trying to picture it, how that would look, and is it going to feel like this huge sign is overcrowding the, the community? If that's not the case, then I'm inclined to, to go with the application.
With all due respect to my, to my colleagues, I think what Mark said is, is, is most important. This is a permitted use. And I, I believe in, in, in all the testimony where we heard the applicant has done everything. I mean, we are going to see the sign, there's, there's no question about that. But, you know, we, it is, it is a permitted use. That's the important thing.
Well, yeah, again, just to clarify, it, it's, that's not just it. It is a, it is a permitted use.
Right.
And then they have one or more variances, and they need to prove to you that the site remains suitable for that use.
Right.
Despite the fact, and, and I think, I think Cheryl, I think, was bringing up, you know, I think some very important points for you to consider, which is, if you have concerns about those deviations, you know, what are those concerns? They might want to talk about that. So, you know, one of them is the, the building, you know, the separation to the building. What are those concerns? And if you have concerns about that deviation, I, I think you should probably have that discussion.
I'll throw my, my two cents in here. So I, I, I think there is a need for the two variances. Of the many, many, many conditions that apply to this, some, far majority of them are met. So the one condition says that you have to be 200 feet from a property line adjoining a highway. There's a setback to a residential roadway, right? The right-of-way?
Yeah, there's really two, two related requirements related to the roadways. One is the 200 feet which they meet, and the other is the visibility part. And, and all of that is, the intent is, and I can tell you because I was involved in the writing of the ordinance, is the intent is, the billboard's supposed to be visible from 287 and not designed such that it is visible from local roadways.
But if the requirement is to be 200 feet, there's got to be some...
They make that.
Well, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. How would that ever not be visible from that road without an additional structure being in the way?
Well, yeah, I think, I think it's two requirements. And that's why they kind of, kind of go hand in hand.
Yeah, I agree.
It's 200 feet and designed in such, and located and designed and placed in such a way that it's, it's visible to the least degree possible.
But the, the, the configuration of the billboard to 30 degrees relative to, what was that, Elizabeth being near 90 degrees to, to 87, I don't see a practical way to have, to fully meet both of those conditions. I think one is dependent on the other. You can kind of pick one or the other. I think the right one was chosen. In terms of the setback to the building, coming into this, my only concern would have been relative to building code and the fire official. If he's okay with the 13 feet, then that satisfies my concerns of minimum separation between structures. Yeah, I would prefer to be a little bit further away, that 30-foot, but that's where I stand on this.
Any other discussion? Thing you want to add?
I would, I would ask if it's, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, if, if our team could just take a two-minute break just to discuss after hearing the deliberations, if the board would be acceptable to that.
Five-minute break?
Two minutes would be perfect.
Take two minutes. Okay, well, we'll call the meeting order again. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for that short recess, and I think, I think, having listened to Mr. Healy and the testimony put forth this evening, going to the fact that this is a permitted use, although conditional, there really are, you know, some substantial detriments with this application. The applicant has done... The applicant has done a stellar job in terms of supporting the variance relief this evening, whatever the board should determine the variance relief is, and that the applicant has done also a good job showing the board that there are no safety concerns, fire concerns with the proposed location for the billboard. So, with that, I would respectfully request that the board grant this application.
I was thinking during your recess, I don't think that your planner mentioned what the impact on the master plan might be. I remember when this, when the ordinance was constructed a number of years ago, it was intended to be tightly, billboards were intended to be tightly controlled and placed in areas of 287, where they would, in this case, to the greatest extent possible, not be visible, but not be visible to the general public or the general residents of the people off the highway. There are only two billboards in this town, one on Easton Avenue, one on Route 27, other than the two adjacent to your property. So, really and truly, I think my concern comes down to, I think this park, the location and the property, the physical part of the property, isn't allowing you to do this to meet a couple of important conditions. Even, and I will admit that you've made the effort to minimize the impact, but how are we now to say no to another application similar to this as a planner?
Sure. So, in terms of the master plan, again, this is not a prohibited use. It's not an excluded use from the zone plan. It's a permitted use with conditions. So, typically, when we look at reconciliation for omission from the master plan, again, we're looking at prohibited uses, we're looking at uses that are not contemplated in the first place. Really what this comes down to is, are those negative criteria? In terms of distance to the existing building, again, we're looking at a building that's three and a half times smaller than what would be permitted here as of right. So, in terms of, I think that the, basically the requirement for that separation between the billboard and the building, it comes down to, is there still adequate light air and open space, which is an underlying goal in the municipal land use law, not having things stacked right up, right up on top of each other. In this case, we're looking, again, at a building that's very small in relation to what's permitted here. So, despite the fact that we do have a sign that's close to it, there still is adequate open space on the property. It's not going to appear overcrowded, and I think that's really the question that the board has to weigh, is, does that separation requirement cause a substantial impairment to the zone plan? And I would say that, I would say no, for all of the reasons on the record.
Mr. Flynn, I have a question. Could you remind us what are the dimensions of the parking? Because when we are looking at dimensions, it's not just the building dimensions that you're referring to. I'm just very concerned about the small dimensions of the parking area itself.
Let's have our engineer come back up, if you wouldn't mind, he can testify to this.
Thank you.
Mr. Scavonets.
The parking spaces that are out there, they're roughly nine by 18, which is a standard parking space. So, I'm not sure the relevance to the billboard. We are removing the one, but we're, again, as I testified, we're replacing two others on the site. So, again, no, no...
Do you know what the width of the parking in that exact location where the structure, the base of the sign is going to go?
It looks about, it looks like it's about nine and a half feet.
And you mentioned earlier that the two sides of the base are, how wide, did you say, five, five feet wide?
To the sides of the base?
The two, I think the billboard is standing on...
The billboard, the billboard pole?
The pole, thank you.
The pole itself is about three foot in diameter.
Three, three feet each?
No, there's one pole.
There is only one pole?
Holding up the sign, and it's about three feet in diameter.
Is, are those three feet taking away from the nine and a half feet of the...
Yeah, we're taking all of the nine and a half away. There's not, there will not be a parking space there. We're going to put, so, okay, I...
It's not only the drive aisle.
I understand your question. In the parking space, if the parking space is nine and a half feet wide, if it's nine and a half feet wide, assume that that's nine and a half feet. You're facing, and I'm the building.
Right.
Okay, so you're looking at the building and you're looking at the parking space. I'm putting the sign where my hand is, off to this side of the parking space. So, the right-hand three feet of the space, there will be six and a half feet left to the, to the left of the sign. To the right of the sign is about a 10-foot or so landscape area that then curves around to the drive aisle on the side of the building. So, there's, there is roughly six to 10 feet on either side of that pole that is not, that is just going to remain empty space, not impacting anything.
Okay, so if we take the size of the building and the five feet or whatever dimensions of the billboard pole is, how crowded do you think that pointy parking lot is going to look after this is constructed?
This is, this is a, this is a spec compared to the parking lot. This has zero impact. In fact, on the site today, if you drove through, I testified about light poles. You can drive through that parking lot today, and there are at least two, as part of the plan, light poles that sit in the middle of the parking lot. One takes up a parking space, one sits in the drive aisle. The diameter of those poles are probably about a foot. The base on those poles, it's a concrete base, is about three feet, is what we typically, 24 to 36 inches is what we design for, no different than what we're proposing here. Again, everything that you're seeing is going to be up above, that's the main part of the structure, 30 feet up in the air. Everything down on the ground is going to be essentially like a light pole base, which is no different than what you see in any parking lot, commercial parking lot, that you visit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the board. Would it help to see a, like, an actual rendering of how that would, how that billboard would look sitting in that space? So that, I mean, some of the questions that I'm hearing, it seems to be getting at how this, we're hearing the distance up in the air, but to see what that would look like?
Yeah, I sat when the other testimony was going on, I heard a lot of dialogue, and obviously, there's, there's some, you know, zoning questions that were raised, but I want to go back to, you know, with respect to this sign and all the, and the requirements. You know, there's the toss-up back and forth with respect to the two variances versus one. We came in here with one, if we all recall, it's the one related to the structure being close to the building. And to that effect, in my opinion, as an engineer, of, this is a life safety issue. If your fire official, Mr. Howk, who I've dealt with on numerous other applications, is okay with this location, I get he says preferred the other, which we're okay with as well, but if he's okay with the other location, technically, we're still dealing with just the one variance, and what that one variance is, you know, the proximity to the building, would, has no impact, standpoint now of zoning, of the operation of the remainder of that site. Again, it's as if we're adding another light pole base within a parking stall that is already an existing condition that's happening on this site today. So, with respect to how the site functions, this has zero impact as to the way the site can function once this sign gets put up in the future. Absolutely zero. In fact, it's going to be better because I get to add in one more parking space than should be, that should be there per your code. With respect to site circulation, visibility, safety of residents nearby, safety of the people operating on this site, zero issue from a life safety standpoint. Now, we go to, well, the preferred method is to go back and maybe get it more, we're more comfortable having it away from the building where we originally proposed it. To be quite honest, I would prefer that, too, and I'm okay with putting it, moving it another 30 feet roughly over to the location where we originally had it. That makes it about 980 feet from another billboard, which requires the second variance. It's de minimis, and yet again, it's the exact same situation as the current location. I'm moving it from one parking space to another parking space, essentially taking one space, which could be a light pole, and making another parking space for another light pole that I'm putting on this property, except it's, instead of having lights on top of it, I've got a billboard now on top of it. And again, zero impact as to the operation of how this site functions. Safe for drivers to move in and out, no impact to the traveling public, no negative impact to the people that are going and working there on a daily basis. So, I get the concern, and as far as, and as far as the look of this and how it impacts things, you know, I know you've, I know that we've seen billboards, I know there's the billboard that's right down the road. This is going to look just like another billboard, similar to the one that's just 1,000 feet away from here. But with respect to how it looks with respect to the site and what it does to the site, we're putting a base this, putting a base this wide within a parking space.
Well, maybe the size of your board?
That's a 36, that's a 36-inch diameter board, right, wide board. It, give or take a foot, it's going to be this wide, sitting in the middle of a parking space.
And just to clarify, you're saying parking space, but you're, it's not going to be a parking space, you're going to stripe it.
Right.
It's going to be a striped island.
And currently, what is a parking space, and then we are going to stripe it.
I just wanted to make sure, just so the board has a complete, you know, understanding of what you're saying. So, it's not going to be a parking space. Parking space, that one parking space is going to go away, you're adding two parking spaces somewhere else.
That is correct.
It's going to be a striped island, and around that base will be bollards.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Well, there's one part of this that I see as talking about the 200-foot issue and the 1,000-foot issue, but what's really troubling people on the board is the, is the, can you see it from a local road or Elizabeth Avenue? And it seems to me that, that, I guess, that you either lose on that basis or you don't need a variance because we decide that you've done it well enough.
And I, I think, Mr. Shepherd, you, you in the beginning noted that you agreed that we did to the greatest extent possible a job to be able to move that billboard so it doesn't have an impact, the key here being an impact on Elizabeth Avenue. And I think that's really the key here, you know, the greatest extent possible, why did why? Because we don't want to have, you don't want to have the motoring public on Elizabeth Avenue being the ones that are looking at this sign. It's meant for 287, and that's how we've designed it. With the exception of a two-and-a-half-second blip if your head's turned immediately to the left when you drive by, because you know it's there and you want to go check it out. And that's not what the motoring public is going to do on a, on a daily basis year after year.
Are you certain a passing vehicle could even see it by looking up and through the ceiling of his car?
I'm, yeah, to be honest, to be honest, maybe not, and because, again, it is also up high. I'm saying turning around on a plane, but, yeah, it's, it's, we've done, we have achieved to the greatest extent possible here, in my opinion.
But that, but that issue doesn't require a variance, that's either an up or down.
That, I defer to counsel on, I think ultimately, it's your determination as an individual board member, whether you've, if that they've achieved that based on the application and design that they presented to you.
Right, and then, if you, whether you agree or disagree, that should be included in your statement as to how you're voting.
Absolutely. I was going to go over that before we get to that, but yes, thank you.
So, just a quick question, for each condition we identify that they don't meet, that would be an individual variance?
Yes.
Okay.
And while we're at it, and just to follow up on what Mr. Shepherd said, and to emphasize what has been emphasized by both the applicant's attorney and by Mr. Healy, you know, this is a permitted conditional use. So, if you were to decide to vote in the negative, it can't be because you don't think it's beneficial to the municipality, because that determination has already been made, because it's a permitted conditional use in the zoning ordinance. But what you have to be satisfied of is that the applicant, through their testimony, have met, yeah, item number two on the TRC report, and item number nine. And obviously, if, if the board's preference is to relocate the, or move the billboard location, then it would trigger, you know, item number five. So, that's really, when you, when we get to the point of voting, depending upon what the motion is, it'll be important for you to put on the record the reasons for voting yes or no, and that will depend upon, obviously, the motion that's made.
Okay, any other comments? Then we will entertain a motion.
Before a motion, do we need to determine what conditions need a variance?
I mean, one of the first questions may be item number nine. Do you want it to remain at the location 13 feet from the building, or would you like it moved to, I guess, around 60 feet from the building?
I'd prefer the 60 feet.
Yeah, me, too.
I say 60 feet.
Well, is it 60, I think it's 30.
Right.
It takes a longer distance.
Say it again.
Okay, or longer distance.
In the end...
Requiring a secondary.
I'm looking at, yeah. Yeah, the number's going to be about 40, it's going to be about 40 feet from the building. Got it, fair enough. So, it'll be obviously further than what you presented this evening.
And if it's 40, then the other distance is 980 feet, correct?
So, that's a variance.
Okay, so, I mean, it would seem as if a majority of the board are supportive of it being moved further away from the building, so that would be part of any...
All right, I move that we grant American Outdoor Advertising LLC two variances to allow them to erect a billboard on, at 347 Elizabeth Avenue in Somerset. The first variance would be to allow them to situate the billboard 40 feet from the existing building. This would be a variance that is, would cover section or ordinance 112-53.1A2, and the second variance would be, would be, is it nine?
Yeah, nine.
Yes.
I think it's actually 53.1A5 and 53.1B3, is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, B3 is, is the separation from the building, and, yeah, A5 is the 1,000-foot separation from the other billboard.
Okay, now, I kind of like messed that up, but I think we all know what we're doing. So, it's the building so that the billboard would be erected 40 feet from the building and 980 feet from the next closest billboard.
Yeah, and then, I think, I think you also need to make, I think in your motion, the determination one way or the other, whether the billboard has been located to the greatest degree possible.
Oh, that we have to, people have to say how they, where they come out on that issue when they vote.
Okay.
But I don't think it, I don't, I think we sorted that out.
I think that's fine. I think that's...
Hey, we need a second?
I'll second.
And if I might, Mr. Chair, just before... And if I might, Mr. Chair, just before we vote, just to emphasize it again. So there's a motion for approval of the application. So if you were to vote yes, that would be to approve it. If you were to vote no, obviously, it would not to approve it. And I would request your reasons for your vote yes or no on the record.
Okay, Cheryl, with you. Okay, I vote yes. I believe that they gave testimony for the variance to the best of their ability. Richard Prokanic.
Yes, I do believe, to the greatest extent possible, that still is a variance. You possibly could move it further to the, I guess, to the east, but that would trigger other variances. I would be in support of the application, whether that was a variance or it was not. My concern was the minimum separation between the building and the billboard, which is the only, the second condition I'm identifying that they don't meet. But if the fire official is satisfied with that separation, then so am I.
Frank, just, I don't think, I think you wanted each board member to address the first part about the greatest degree possible. Not to put you on the spot, Cheryl, but I don't think you addressed that part, whether you were satisfied that they've placed the billboard to the greatest degree possible so it's not to be visible from Elizabeth Avenue. Do you have a position on that?
Okay, yes, I do believe that they gave testimony that would situate the billboard to the best possible to the least amount of visibility to the public.
And, Mr. Prokanic, I think the motion is to actually approve it and relocate or move it 40 feet. So I think it's whether you agree with that or not.
Yes.
Alvin Rich.
Yes, I vote to approve it for those two reasons also. Do I need to say them?
That's fine.
Gary Rosenthal.
I vote yes, same reasons. Even though you are gonna see this sign, no matter where you put it, but I will go along with it.
Robert Shepherd.
I vote yes. I think that they have done their best to minimize the sighting of the billboard by people on Elizabeth Avenue or other local streets.
Michael Darty.
Yes, I think to the greatest extent possible, they have done their best to mitigate the visual of the billboard. And I say yes.
Robert Thomas.
No, I'm gonna vote yes. My concern, main concern, was the visibility, any visibility of this facility from Elizabeth Avenue and the ground level. I think that they did as much as possible to limit it. And for the two-second view that someone driving by is gonna see it, I don't think that warrants a no vote. But it is a little bit disappointing because, having been involved in the original intent of this ordinance, it was to keep all billboards invisible from the general public on the streets and make them only visible on 287. Actually, it was limited to 287. But the 13 feet to the 40 feet also makes me a little bit more comfortable too. Was yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening and for your service to the township. Thank you.